Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown and I call this special school board meeting to order at 6:00 PM on this 27th day of August 2025 pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3707 and by law 146, Section B, C, and D at the call of the chair and on the request of the superintendent designated with the concurrence of the chair and on the request of three school board members in writing to the chair and clerk of the school board. The purpose for this special meeting is namely to discuss consultation with legal counsel in closed session as needed, presentations regarding health insurance premiums, employee healthcare costs, and potential future steps. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the school board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. And Ms. Dwyer is on the way. Would you please join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance as you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are now on to the adoption of the agenda. We'll accept a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to adopt the agenda as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Okay, and Mr. Cummings has something to say.
Thank you so much, Chair. As many of you folks know, I'm a strong supporter of public education and I do want to acknowledge that I'll be stepping away from tonight's discussion and any votes because of my work with Centerra Health Plans, which is the selective vendor of our health plans. Because of this, I'll be recusing myself from tonight's board discussion just as I did previously when Mercer presented. I will still be present to listen but will not participate in the conversation.
Okay, thank you. We are going to read into closed session but the school board is going to go down the hall to the Einstein Labs so that everybody here today can stay in chambers during that time. Vice Chair Williams, would you please read the motion to go into closed?
I move that the school board recess into closed session accordance with the exceptions to open meetings laws set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraphs 7 and 8, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Namely to discuss, A, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, B, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation, retention of outside legal counsel, and pending litigation matters.
Moved by Vice Chair Williams, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session.
So, Madam Chair, we have eight ayes and one abstention, so the motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the certification of close, moved by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to certify closed session.
Mr. Callen, how do you vote? Thank you. Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and one abstention, so the motion to pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to our presentations regarding health insurance premiums, employee healthcare costs, and potential future steps, and we welcome Crystal Page, Chief Financial Officer, and Lynda Mackens, Director of Benefits.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'm gonna start the meeting tonight. I'd like to thank all of our attendees tonight for coming out to learn information about how we got to where we are, and for those of us, those of you who are joining us live from home. Tonight, Administration and our partner Mercer will be presenting detailed information on the projected healthcare coverage and rates for 2026. The information in this presentation is vital to everyone's understanding of how we arrived at decisions regarding healthcare, which includes multiple factors. So let's begin. Go to the next slide. So in this presentation, we will begin with an introduction of the dilemma, which in a nutshell is the rate increase of nearly 100% to health coverage costs that for the past three years have been kept very low. This sticker shock was unexpected and sounded an alarm with employees.
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the certification of close, moved by Ms. Melnick, seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to certify closed session.
Mr. Callen, how do you vote? Thank you. Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and one abstention, so the motion to pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to our presentations regarding health insurance premiums, employee healthcare costs, and potential future steps, and we welcome Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer, and Linda Mackens, Director of Benefits.
Actually, Madam Chair, I'm gonna start the meeting tonight. I'd like to thank all of our attendees tonight for coming out to learn information about how we got to where we are, and for those of us, those of you who are joining us live from home. Tonight, Administration and our partner Mercer will be presenting detailed information on the projected healthcare coverage and rates for 2026. The information in this presentation is vital to everyone's understanding of how we arrived at decisions regarding healthcare, which includes multiple factors. So let's begin. Go to the next slide. So in this presentation, we will begin with an introduction of the dilemma, which in a nutshell is the rate increase of nearly 100% to health coverage costs that for the past three years have been kept very low. This sticker shock was unexpected and sounded an alarm with employees. They felt blindsided and wanted to know how this happened and whether any other actions could have been made. Because of this, we have front-loaded the presentation focusing on staff who may be watching or in attendance, so they can receive the information of greatest interest to them before moving into the complexities of healthcare coverage and costs. To assist in the explanation of how we arrived at this point, we will begin by sharing employee compensation data for the past five years. This is important, as providing all employees with an attractive compensation package is a School Board and Superintendent priority, as this promotes recruitment and retention of staff. We will then share information on the 2026 projected healthcare coverage contributions from Virginia Beach City Public Schools and from employees who select one of our healthcare options. This will be important for everyone to see how costs are shared. Determining healthcare coverage costs is an annual process. To help level-set this work, we will share historical healthcare funding and how funding impacted rates. From there, we will conclude the first part of the presentation by sharing a communication timeline to outline work completed over the past 10 months, and more specifically, over the past five months. Mercer will then join us and share detailed information on potential rate change scenarios before diving into the complexities of projecting healthcare costs using a number of key drivers and variables. We will then provide answers to any remaining questions sent to Administration by Board members before ending with an FAQ to further assist staff. As I mentioned, the real dilemma is on how to address the ever-increasing cost of healthcare. Every school division or business that offers healthcare coverage to their employees is grappling with this issue, the issue we have before us. As an employer, how do you balance available funding in a manner that provides an attractive compensation package to your employees? And when a sudden change occurs, how do you keep your employees informed? It is obvious the increase to healthcare costs in 2026 caught employees by surprise, and we must do better and we will do better keeping employees informed in the future. Know our strategic plan encompassed 2030 has two goals that will guide the work to come. Goal three sets the priority to value and invest in staff. When staff received the news of the projected healthcare rates for 2026, they didn't feel valued and that we were investing in them. Tonight, my team will share information that will show how we have invested in you and will continue to invest in you. It will also show that my actions when notified of the recommendation to increase rates back to where they were from 2019 to 2022 were immediate, made with the best intentions, and represented a major change to how and when healthcare rates had been shared with staff in prior years. Goal five also plays a role in all budget decisions as we seek to advance organizational excellence. An important point for everyone to understand that impacts this dilemma is that every organization, in this case, a school division, must establish an annual budget that is grounded in priorities and available funding. When funding increases, organizations can do more. When funding is flat or decreases, organizations can do less. When costs go up and funding has not changed, organizations must adapt. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has a fiscal responsibility to allocate funds within a projected budget and may not overspend that budget. Any decisions to add more funds to one area of the budget must be balanced with an equal reduction to another area of the budget. Despite any wish to do more, no matter how important it is, will be accompanied by a loss in funding to another area. Over the past two weeks, my team has been diligently reviewing our work, identifying areas for improvement and problem-solving to address this dilemma. Tonight, you will get just a glimpse of that work, as we are committed to working within the confines of an improved budget at the discretion of the School Board. And now, I will turn the presentation over to Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weem, School Board Members, Dr. Robertson. Joining me this evening is Linda Mackens, Director of Consolidated Benefits, and David Keo, Principal with Mercer, who will provide more in-depth detail on tonight's topic. Before turning it over to them, I would like to briefly share with you and with our viewing public the highlights of our compensation investments over the past five fiscal years. A compensation package represents the full value of what employees receive in return for their work. This includes salary, health benefits, and other financial and non-financial rewards that support both their professional contributions and overall well-being. Over the past five years, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has dedicated additional funding of approximately $171 million to salary and wage increases and an additional $27.5 million to employer contributions for the health plan. Together, that is nearly $200 million in added investment to our employees' compensation packages. Drawing your attention to last year, 2024-25, the School Board allocated over $32.1 million towards salary and wages, which supported a step increase of 1% to 1.5% effective July 1st for employees, along with a 2% raise for all employees effective August 1st. In addition, the School Board committed an additional $11 million to keep healthcare rates flat for 2025. The total investment in compensation for 2024-25 was over $43.2 million. For this school year, 2025-26, the School Board allocated over $29.1 million towards salary and wages, supporting a 4% to 4.5% raise for all employees. They also set aside an additional $8 million to maintain healthcare costs for 2025. The total compensation investment for 2025-26 amounts to more than $37.1 million. We wanted to highlight this broader view to document how important it is to the School Board to provide employees with the best possible compensation package each year based on available funding. By stepping back, we can better see the substantial, long-term investment that has been made in our employees' compensation. And with that perspective in mind, I will now turn the presentation over to Linda and David to walk you through the additional detail of information.
Good evening. And if I could, just as you get to slides with charts, I've had a couple Board members ask if we could briefly pause if there is a lot of complexity, so keep in mind. Thank you.
In the next several slides, we will review employer contributions towards employee and retiree coverage in response to a School Board Member's request for this information. You can see that School Board employees or school employees are offered a point-of-service or POS plan and a Consumer-Driven Health Plan or CDHP. You can see that we offer five tiers of coverage: employee-only, employee and child, employee and children, employee and spouse, and family. To review these calls, we will first focus on the school-employee POS family coverage outlined in red. The 2026 total annual cost for the school-employee POS family coverage is $35,695.43. The first column shows cost without an employer contribution to Health Savings Account or HSA, and the second column is the cost of coverage with the HSA. But the POS plan that we're focusing on at this moment is not eligible to offer an HSA, and therefore, these amounts for the POS are the same in those first two columns. The funding sources to pay for this coverage include, if you're looking from right to left, an annual employee contribution of $7,961.28, an annual employer contribution of $23,545.43, and an annual health fund drawdown of $4,188.172. The combined value of the employer contributions and the health fund drawdown for the school's employee POS family coverage is $27,734.15. That number's not shown up there, it's just those two columns added together. As mentioned, there are no HSA contributions for the POS plan, and therefore, this column is zero. To review the CDHP plan, we'll focus on the school-employee CDHP family coverage also as outlined in the red at the bottom portion of this slide. The value of this plan includes an employer contribution towards a Health Savings Account, so we will review the funding sources for the second column to the left, which is the total annual cost with an HSA. The 2026 total annual cost for the school-employee CDHP family coverage with an HSA is $31,867.91. The funding sources to pay for this coverage, from right to left again, an annual employee contribution of $4,140.60, an annual employer contribution of $23,545.43, an annual health fund drawdown of $3,462.11, and an annual employer contribution towards the HSA of $719.77. The combined value of the employer contributions for health, the employer contribution to the HSA, and the health fund drawdown equals $27,727.31. And just for clarification, as this is confusing when looking at the rate sheet, the employer contribution provided to those enrolled in an HSA plan for single coverage is actually an annual contribution of $750, rather than what you see here of $431.86. And for all dependent tiers, the contribution is $1,250, rather than what you see here of $719.77. The reason it is shown differently here is due to the fact that all employees enrolled in the CDHP plan are not enrolled in receiving an HSA funding, so the amounts shown are the average cost to the employer spread across all enrolled for accounting purposes. I don't want someone to think that we have changed the HSA contribution, so I wanted to clarify that. They are still $750 for single coverage and $1,025 for all dependent tiers. School retirees are also offered a point-of-service, a POS-
Hold on, I'm sorry. Ms. Rogers?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify, and for everyone. So our point-of-service plan would not be the high deductible plan. The CDHP would be the high deductible.
That is correct.
So what is the deductible for the high deductible plan, just so that I understand what it is?
It's $2,000 for those enrolled in employee-only coverage, and it's $4,000 for those enrolled in any dependent tier.
So after the employee-only, for your employee child or employee children, employee spouse or family, it's $4,000 for the high deductible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
All right, looking at this slide, this is actually for retirees. So school retirees are also offered a POS and a CDHP plan. They're the same plans offered for employees, as well as all five tiers of coverage. And for clarification and looking at this slide, although the term "employee" was used in these tiers, this is actually for retiree coverage. So to review costs, we will first focus on the school-retiree POS retiree-only coverage as outlined in red. The 2026 total annual cost for the school-retiree POS retiree-only coverage is $15,122.94, and the funding sources are annual retiree contributions of $3,074.88, an annual employer contribution of $10,409, and an annual health fund drawdown of $1,647.97. The combined value of the employer contributions and the health fund drawdown for the school's retiree POS retiree-only coverage is $12,048.6. The 2026 annual cost for the school-retiree CDHP retiree-only coverage as outlined in the red at the bottom portion of the slide is $13,069.49, and the funding sources are, from right to left, the annual retiree contribution of $1,459.8, an annual employer contribution of $10,409, and an annual health fund drawdown of $1,210.32. In addition to an annual employer contribution towards the HSA of $431.86, the combined value of the employer contribution and the health fund drawdown for the school-retiree CDHP retiree-only coverage is $12,042.27, and the same thing applies that I mentioned about the HSA. The contributions into those plans are still $750 for single coverage and $1250 for dependent tiers. It's the same. They actually are enrolled in the same plans and offer the same contribution. In the prior slides, we provided employer contribution by plan and tier for each employee and retiree enrolled. This historical healthcare funding is taken from the fiscal year-end reporting for monies paid in total by fiscal year. So this is looking at actuals and not projections. Rates are developed with projected cost on a calendar-year basis. The top part of the chart is the total employer contributions, and the bottom part represents the employee and retiree premiums. The total employer contributions for the 2019 fiscal year-end was $67.6 million. You can see how the contributions increased year over year with the projected cost for fiscal year 2026 of $105.8 million. The total employee retiree premiums for the 2019 fiscal year-end were $18.1 million. They dropped in the fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2025 years to $9.4 million, under projected to be $13.8 million in fiscal year 2026. The employer has consistently paid a significant portion of the total cost of coverage, and looking at fiscal year 2019, it was 78.88%, and it grew to 90.77% in fiscal year 2025. The projected rates would cover 88, for 2026, would cover 88.46% of cost, leaving employees to cover the remaining 11.54%. This slide provides a look at historical employee premiums. In review of the employee-only coverage for the point-of-service plan shown at the top, which was formerly called the POS premier, premiums were $63.29 per pay period in 2019. Premiums remained $63.29 in 2020, 2021, and 2022, with no increase in premiums or changes in plan design. In 2023, premiums were reduced to $29.75 per pay period and remained $29.75 in 2024 and 2025. There were also no plan design changes in those years. In fact, information based upon paid claims data combined for both plans for calendar year 2024 indicates that the plan paid 89% of the total cost paid to providers, while the members paid 11% of those costs. The 2026 premiums will return to the $63.29, which are the same premiums that were in place seven years ago. You can see from this chart that the same held true for both plans available today in all tiers of coverage, where the premiums remain the same in the years 2019 through 2022, reduced in years 2023 through 2025, and returned to the 2019 premium level for 2026. It is recognized that employees hired after 2022, when the reduced premiums were already in effect, may be more surprised by the premium increases for 2026. Also to note, when the middle plan, the POS standard, was eliminated, the plan design for the CDHP plan formerly called the POS basic was improved to cover a greater coinsurance percentage. Over the last three years, the rising cost of healthcare was absorbed fully by the health fund balance in 2023, and in 2024 and 2025 by a combination of additional investments by the employer, as noted earlier by Ms. Pate, and the health fund balance. The health fund will not have the means to absorb increases in the future, and employee funding has already reached the level of covering nearly 91% of cost as discussed earlier. This is no longer a viable solution, and therefore, premiums were increased for the 2026 plan year. This is hard to read, but this communication timeline from October 2024 to August of 2025 shows the dates when the need for increased healthcare funding was communicated, provides highlights of key dates when changes in plan projections occurred, necessitating additional rate scenarios, and ultimately contributing to the larger premium increases, and the dates when final projections were received that led to finalizing the rates. The key dates provided indicate a typical timeline. The specifics for 2026 include: October 8th of 2024, School Board presentation to revenue-sharing formula reconciliation with higher trend reported than prior years; November 12th, 2024, requested reversion funds to close the healthcare gap; November 25th of 2024, updated projections that necessitated an additional 10% increase in the employer contributions beginning January 1st of 2025; November 26th of 2024, five-year forecast reported an expected increase of 15% in fiscal year 26; January 28th of 2025, School Board workshop reported healthcare increasing by double digits; February 25th of 2025, School Board workshop reminded need for $10 million in healthcare; March 4th, 2025, School Board present- million in healthcare; March 4th, 2025, school board presentation on healthcare with options for increases of 15% as presented as option two and 35% presented as option one; May 21st of 2025, updated projections due to increase in cost with updated claims experience and effects of the American Rescue Plan on drug pricing; June 24th, 2025, updated projections with update and expected trend from a 7% to 9% affecting both the 2025 and 2026 plan years, as well as what was also factored was expected movement in enrollment from the POS plan to the CDHP. July 25th of 2025 were the final updated projections. July 30th of 2025, we finalized the rates. This date to finalize rates was important due to the fact that our configuration changes within our enrollment platform provider with benefit focus were needed by July 31st of 2025. Then on August 7th, 2025, a notification letter of increases in healthcare premiums were released to our employees and retirees.
If we could wait until she's done with her portion, and then we'll ask questions. You could just notate which slide it is.
This communication timeline dives a little deeper into the key changes and projections and the actions taken in finalizing the rates. Details of these key dates include March 4th of 2025, and some of these were mentioned earlier, but this goes into a little greater detail. At the time of the presentation to the school board, gross cost was projected at $127.8 million utilizing a 7% trend in claims experience through December 31st, 2024. In this budget meeting, staff shared two options that would increase the employee's share of health coverage in 2026, one at 15% and one at 35%. This was a signal to staff that health coverage costs were very likely to increase to somewhere in this range. Dr. Robertson was asked by Chairwoman Brown if any action was needed at the time. He said no as we were waiting on the first quarter of healthcare data for 2025. On May 21st of 2025, Mercer obtained claims experience through March 31 of 2025 and incorporated expected changes in pharmacy spend due to the American Rescue Plan Act with updated projections to gross cost of $130.6 million. They also updated our employer contribution to reflect $105.8 million. The previously reported $110 million had assumed another budget increase of 10% for fiscal year 26, and we had asked them to not include that as the updated created a greater reliance on the... I'm sorry. So we asked them to change that because we hadn't budgeted that monies for the fiscal year 2026 year. So that's why the change from $110 million to $105.8 in that column. These updates created a greater reliance on the health fund reserves. On June 24th of 2025, projections were updated with an increase in trend assumption to 9% previously at 7, affecting both the 2025 and 2026 plan years with gross cost now projected at $135.6 million, a rate scenario to increase the premiums to the same cost as was in place in 2022, resulting in an aggregate increase of 97%. It also incorporated a 4% change in enrollment migration from the POS to the CDHP plan. These changes resulted in a 200,000 deficit projection of the health fund balance at 1231, 2026. This data resulted in further discussions internally and with Mercer about healthcare costs for 2026 that could be higher than option shared in March. Since this was the first time we had seen a 9% trend increase, we felt it was prudent to review funding scenarios before making recommendations to the superintendent. On July 3rd of 2025, internal discussions among staff to discuss funding options and rates scenarios took place. On July 25th of 2025, we received and reviewed additional funding solutions that we had requested from Mercer, including the 9% trend and the 4% migration on other options. With no changes to projections from June 24, the benefits and budget team met to investigate options and settled on a recommendation to return healthcare costs to the rates used from the 2019 to 2022 timeframe, which resulted in a 97% average increase from 2025. On June 30th of 2025, discussions and decisions on direction was made to finalize rates. This was the date when we first notified the superintendent that we would be recommending rate increases that we are discussing this evening. Dr. Robertson expressed a deep concern about the increase and directed staff to develop a communication to share with staff as soon as possible. He wanted employees to have plenty of time to digest the information and make decisions before the typical process where employees learn of their healthcare costs when they receive their benefits information one or just before open enrollment. On August 7th, 2025, the employee notification letter was released.
If I could, I'm just going to open the floor for any questions that we have. Seems like a natural spots to ask. I know Ms. Rogers. Ms. Rogers?
Okay, hi. I have a couple of questions. First of all, you just talked about, you know, that there was discussion to the board about percentage of increases. Was there at any point, like, did you guys communicate actual numbers of how much it would cost our staff, or did you not have that information?
I believe that information... I don't think that we showed employee premiums when we were doing that, because at that point, we don't typically look at employee premiums, but I can't recall. Do you know? You're talking about the March 4th meeting?
The March 4th, and then I also have highlighted May 21st. You were saying that Mercer emailed updated projections and that we had a presentation with Mercer. I was just wondering, I don't recall seeing any of the premium increase numbers. I mean, we discussed that there was going to be a gap, and I recall it being asked, but I don't recall us getting those numbers, because I recall being told that we didn't have them yet. Is that correct?
No, if they had provided a 15 and a 35% rate scenario, it wouldn't have been that we didn't have them yet. We may have just been taught, and we'll have to look to find out if we had provided those.
I have the presentation. We did. When we discussed those options on March 4th, there were rate tables that showed what the increase to the employee would be under each.
Right. And looking at the rate tables, there was an option one and an option two, but are those the two things that we presented when we presented it to the staff?
No, and that's, I think, the timeline that Linda's going through, is that that was very early on, and as cost increased and things kept going in the wrong direction, that's when we started monitoring and trying to increase employer contributions in order to try to keep those rates stable. And we just got to a point where we had to make a decision and we couldn't keep it stable. So what was presented then was presented to the board in a public workshop, but it was not communicated because there's been no decision at that point. We were looking at scenarios.
Right, okay. So that's... I just wanted to make that clear then. We weren't presented with the, I guess we'll call it option three that went out, because we were told option one could be, option two could be, but it actually wound up option three, which wound up being much higher, correct?
If you want, yeah, if you want. There were other scenarios that were also looked at, but that, those were not presented as well. We looked and tried to see what the trend was and what was happening to the cost and all of that.
But with regard to the timeline, so we have to have our budget completed before the governor signs off by the state, but you guys don't have your final numbers until the end of June?
That is correct. And if you look at some of the stuff on the communication timeline, you know, by code, we have to have a budget approved by city council on May 15. And so if you look at some of those earlier dates when they're looking at claims data, we're in 2024, very early 2025. So we're working with the most recent data we have, but there is quite a delay from when we have to approve a budget and when that trend continues to go. And we only have one window when we can increase employee premiums, and that's a January 1 on the plan date. We do have some options as an employer during the year. It's a programming thing. If we look, and we have done that, where we think we need to increase employer, and if we think we can fund it, and we're trying to do that, we do do that, but it's not like every month or anything like that.
No, so we basically don't get the finalized numbers after June 30th every year.
That is correct.
But we have to have our budgets set.
That's correct.
So there is always going to be like an information gap, so to speak, because we will never get our numbers on healthcare finalized until well after our budget has to be established.
Yes, ma'am, and that's always been the case. It's just that what you see now is a little bit of an unusual anomaly with the way things move.
Right. So here's my last question, I guess. Was it communicated via email or letter or any kind of communication to the staff after the March 4th or the meeting that we had where we were discussing percentages, that it was a possibility that healthcare could increase? Did we give some sort of like general statement out to staff that basically said, "We're looking at our healthcare costs, but it's possible it could be increasing for next year"?
No, a lot of that was just done in public meetings. It was not done as directly staff, because, I mean, I don't have a good reason. My thought would be, I don't want to put stuff out which may or may not be happening. So we tried to communicate and advise the board that, because as far as back as July of 2024, when we did school board retreat, and I know some of you are not on there, but I talked about at that time, we were starting to experience double-digit increases in our trend, and that we would likely have an increase on 1126, but at that point, there was no percentages mentioned at that time.
Right, because there wouldn't be able to be that unless we had a crystal ball, which we don't have. All right, thank you.
Okay, so on these charts, you talk about the annual health fund drawdown. Is that with the proposed increases on slide seven and then slide six?
When we're talking about the health fund drawdown, so typically, your total cost is made up of your employee and your employer funding. That equals your total cost. But because, as you all were made aware, our health fund balance was very healthy back in 2023, and that's when the decision was made to reduce rates. And when doing that, the employer and the employee funding, when you start relying on the health fund itself to pay for your ongoing cost, then at some point, you know, that will be depleted. So I'm not sure if that answers.
Right, I guess this is 2026 annual health fund drawdown?
So that in 2026, it is relying on, I think it was $11.4 million for the scenario that we provided and the 97% rate increase. And David will be going over the details of that information in just a moment. But yes, the 2026 year is still relying on the health fund drawdown.
Okay, all right. And then on slide 10, under 521, 2025, the American Rescue Plan effect on drug pricing, that's pretty interesting. Could you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure. So what, and David probably can fill us in with a little more information, but that, in essence, is lowering diabetic drug insulin pricing. So when the member goes to have their prescriptions filled, they're going to actually see the reduction in their rates. Some drugs, as you may be familiar with, but there is rebates that come back to the plan based on certain drugs. And that was, diabetic drugs is one of those. And so there's large rebates that come back to the plan. They get deposited back into the fund for the benefit of the group. But with this change, the members themselves will receive the benefit of that. So then the rebates don't come back to the total plan, so that did have an impact.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, so looking back at slide nine, where you showed the historical employee rates.
Yes.
So our employees are paying the same rate for 2026 as they did for 2022?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just so the public knows, in that graphic, '23, '24, '25 was when we were able to make a more significant impact on the healthcare. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that and that the public understands that. So for those three years when we had more money, okay. All right, so we're back at the exact same number from 2022?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers?
I had another question, sorry. Thought of. You mentioned that the benefits and budget team met. Is that... I know that we're kind of tied to the city, so is the benefit and budgets team the one that you met with? Is that just the school side, or is that the combined?
That was just the school side.
Okay, so are there, like, I guess I'm trying to understand how this all gets decided, because if we have a benefits and budgets team on the school side, I'm assuming they do on the city side. So then who, are we going to get into who decides on all of this?
So we do have a joint benefits executive committee with executive leadership from both the city and the schools. We do meet together monthly. Sometimes those meetings are canceled if there's not updates to discuss. We do receive quarterly projections or updated projections from Mercer. So we're all meeting together. We're all talking about this together. But in the year that we reduced rates for 2023, we no longer have the same, you know, had the same rates as the city. They also, which I can't speak to, but, you know, their budgeting is different than the schools. And so we got to a point where, when we were meeting jointly, that we had to either focus on the schools or focus on the city. So sometimes if it went, if we needed to discuss specific budgeting and rates and so forth associated just with the schools, we would have separate meetings that were not a full benefits executive committee meeting. So that's what that's referring to.
Okay. And so you said that there was executives, but I've heard from other board members that elected school board members are not allowed to be at those meetings. Are there elected city officials in those meetings?
There are not.
And is there a reason why? And I'm asking because, at the end of the day, it's our responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, to ensure that we are being responsible. So I'm kind of confused as to why we're barred from those meetings or not allowed to be there, but it's our responsibility, and we have to take that, like, we took an oath for that responsibility. And, oh, Kami's going to tell me.
The information they have is brought back to you. There are many, many committees that we have that we meet that school board members aren't on. So you've got your list of committees under Bala 128 that you appoint to. These are just committees, working internal committees. And again, we have so many committees within the school division that we're meeting. The information we have here comes back to you in generally budget or other types of meetings on there, but that is, these are working sessions that we're dealing with.
Right, but if we wanted to sit in and understand, like, especially if we're doing RFPs and we're trying to understand what's going on, like, I've been told that we have been told we are not allowed to. Is that correct, or can we sit in and see what's happening since we're responsible?
That is a discussion your board ends up having with your superintendent. The problem is, once I get to a three of you on it, now it becomes a meeting. It's open the door. We have to have notices. We have to have everything we have in a meeting. It's not efficient for us to be running all of our meetings where you show up, which is why we're always careful why you're coming to it. You don't have a voting right for it. Other committees that you have, you have made a decision, that's Bala 128, where we need a liaison. This is simply, this is one of those committees we've not determined liaison is necessary to it, because all the information eventually comes back to you.
Right, I understand that. I think just because there's so much questions and confusion and lack of understanding, maybe we should consider having somebody once a... I don't know. It's...
So if I may, just make, want to be clear to everyone, I've never indicated that board members can't be a part of that committee. I've never been asked. In fact, my comment has been, when this has come up, is, well, perhaps a board member and a council member do need to be on the benefits committee. So I have never been asked, nor would I ever deny a board member from wanting to be on a committee.
Sorry, I did not.
No, ma'am, you did not. I just wanted to make sure, the way people here.
No, I know, and this is where I'm trying to clarify, because, again, I feel like that we are responsible. And, again, I have, I mean, and I don't know if this is the right place to ask about RFPs or not. Are we going for, like, I have no idea if we're going to be talking about that, but I think that, like, there's questions, I have questions about the RFP process. So should I ask it here, or is there another part where it would be more beneficial?
There is not a specific part of the presentation that talks about the RFP. We do mention it, I think, somewhere, but we did do an RFP for health last year or this, into this year, and re-awarded to Centerra.
And so let me ask then, if I may, about the RFP process, how often do we do it?
Typically, there's, it depends on the vendor. Typically, there's, uh, it depends on, on the vendor. Um, the past ones have been seven years.
Okay. And then, um, do we have like quantitative and qualitative criteria for our scorecard on who we choose?
Yes, we use Mercer Consulting to help us with our.
Okay, so Mercer's the one that helps us with that scorecard. And I guess if, so if, you can't answer, Mercer can, I can wait for these. But like, I'm just kind of wondering about the focus, um, the factors that led us to choose Centerra? Like, if there were specific qualitative factors that led us to choose them?
Um.
Because it's, ah, ah, yeah. Go ahead.
I think, I'm going to step in here. Under the procurement process, there are certain decisions you do and don't make that are made available.
Yeah.
Other decisions that may not be available for you. Um, you can get the procurement documents afterward to see what they rely on. Some of the information is not necessarily available to the public. It's proprietary. So that may be stuff we cannot provide you.
Then I'm going to ask, uh, just one last question because I'll ask for that documentation. But do, do our audit team or the city's audit team, does anybody do any kind of like audit of the RFP process? Do we know? Or if they have done it recently or anything?
Of the specific medical healthcare products or the overall?
Well, I'm kind of looking at like, um, like if they've done an RFP on how we do the, uh, army, sorry. If they do an audit on how we do the RFP process and including like any relationships that we've had with our providers, um, and if there's any results with regard to that, if we've done audits on that.
Your procurement officer would be responsible for making sure you're doing it in compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act. That's her responsibility to make sure that's happened. Audit is going to go in either on a performance audit or when they have reason to believe that there's, it's a risk factor for us to check and that that's not been on our risk analysis.
Okay, I, I didn't know if we, like, conducted any in that capacity where we were looking at ensuring that the RFP process is going smoothly. If, you know, we're making sure that we're not awarding based on whatever, so.
We are required to be in compliance with the Virginia Public Procurement Act, and that is what your auditor is, your, you know, I'm sorry, your procurement officer is responsible.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Melnick, and then we're going to move on with the presentation. And just a heads up, I'm getting some reports that some people that are viewing may be having a little bit of trouble hearing you. So if you could just maybe move the microphone up.
So as a school board, let me just clarify. I've been on the board for 11 years. We've never voted on healthcare premiums before. This is something that Consolidated Benefits takes care of. And your job is to find the best product at the best price for our employees as best you can.
That is correct.
So this is not a Virginia Beach City Public Schools problem. I believe that healthcare across our nation has increased exponentially. And so I will leave my one comment here, my personal comment, that, um, my health insurance increased unbelievably. But I've made no, I've not hidden my health insurance cost, which for my family was $2,400 a month. I am the employer. I have no employee contribution. I have to pay that. And my health insurance just increased to $3,333, $3,333 a month. And so I feel that pain too. Um, and so I am correct though in assuming that healthcare coverage across the board, like across this nation has increased. Okay, I'm getting a head nod from Mercer. So I just need to know that. And, um, but mostly that we have never had a vote on healthcare, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Melnick, if I, if I can add, um, to that, because I think this is important as well. So my responsibility as superintendent is to not overspend the budget. So the board approved the budget, the city approved our budget. Um, when we Consolidated Benefits does their work, it's my fiduciary responsibility as superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools to ensure that any decision I make does not overspend the existing budget.
And that's the school board's number one responsibility as well.
And, and so when Consolidated Benefits provided that information on July the 25th, and I received the information on July 30th for the first time, we took immediate action. So.
Thank you, Dawn.
There we are. I was trying to get to the right slide. Um, we did put together a frequently asked questions document that was created and is available on the Consolidated Benefits Office website in the open enrollment section on the, uh, www.benefitsatthebeach.com. On the screen, you can see where the long, um, actual URL is listed, but it can be navigated to by getting to the open enrollment site. Open enrollment is Monday, September 29th through Monday, October 13th for most of our employees and retirees. Um, and employees and retirees with additional questions may contact the Consolidated Benefits Office by emailing benefits@vbschools.com. Or contacting us at 757-263-1060. All right. We will be addressing questions, uh, additional questions raised by the school board as we continue with the presentation. A request was made to provide additional premium options and to understand how those scenarios would be funded. Two additional options will be presented that provide average increases of 75% and 50%. The ability to provide additional funding, as Dr. Robertson mentioned, will require shifting budget priorities to reallocate funding from the operating budget. With that, I'll turn it over to Da- David Keo, Senior Principal with Mercer.
Thank you very much, Linda. And I'll, I'll address, uh, if I may, Ms. Mrs. Melnick's, um, question about the impact of rising healthcare costs nationally and on a statewide basis. And that is absolutely the phenomenon that we are seeing. Uh, when we look at our clients across the country and across the Commonwealth of Virginia, we're seeing, uh, for 2026, the impact to budget rates for the employer, uh, self-funded employer-sponsored, uh, segment, uh, increasing three to five percent above what they traditionally have. And the range on those is anywhere from, um, you know, uh, the, the average was 10.9, the range is eight to, to 20 plus. Uh, so it, this is, this is not unique to Virginia Beach City Public Schools for, for certain. All right, so as Linda mentioned, uh, we were asked to provide some details around a couple of different funding scenarios. And this first one here, so the original, uh, released, uh, contribution scenario is called for a 97% increase to employee contributions. This first alternative that I'll talk about here, uh, calls for a 75% increase to employee contributions. Um, and so, uh, I'll give you just a couple of stats and tell you where we'll focus on this, because there's a lot of numbers on this page. But, uh, 73% of your active employees are enrolled in the point-of-service plan. Uh, and, uh, just shy of 60% are in single coverage. So with that context, I'll ask you to focus on the very first row, the employee only, under the point-of-service program. And you'll see there, uh, the black segment is the, uh, original 2025 contribution is in, uh, is in blue under this new scenario. And you'll see the increased dollar amount and percentage basis. So this scenario calls for an increase of $496.79 per year. When we compare that to the 2022 contributions that the original scenario that was released matched, you'll see that it's, uh, these, this scenario is about $174 below the 22 contribution requirements. Uh, and that's about 14%. So this, um, so I'll, on, and, and for that particular tier of coverage, this scenario would, uh, call for Virginia Beach City Public Schools to fund, uh, approximately 90% of that cost. So when you look at the total cost with HSA in the very first column in the black, and then you take the contribution, the employee contribution presented, uh, dollar at, uh, 1,091.75, um, it is, uh, it's about approximately 10%. And that is up from 88% that the, uh, employer would fund under the originally released, uh, scenario. So the figures for the, uh, the family coverage, you'll see there, uh, in that row in the point-of-service on the top, um, the total cost with HSA, 30, uh, just shy of $36,000 per year. Uh, this, uh, this scenario would be, would call for them to contribute $6,866. Uh, and that's an increase from 2025 of $3,124. But it would remain still, uh, about a thousand, about $1,100 below the 2022 rates. Uh, again, about 14% lower. So unless I'm asked, I'll refrain from going into the detail for, for each and every tier. But I hope that gives you the, the perspective there. So recall, in aggregate, Linda talked about the employer contribution towards the rates being at 90.77%. So if you think about it on a per-tier basis, uh, those two that I referenced were pretty close. Um, actually, I will talk about one, one more under the CDHP plan. That's the lowest cost option, uh, that provides the most affordable plan. Uh, and so with that particular option, the total cost with HSA for the single is $9,848. Under this scenario, um, the contribution would be 86.67 per year, and that is, uh, less than 1%. So in, in that scenario, for that type of coverage and that tier of coverage, the employer responsibility would be in excess of 99%. And so when we roll that all up, that in aggregate, uh, comprises the 90.77% that we referenced.
Can I just ask you really quick before you move on? Um, what is the total dollar cost to us of that change? Because I know that we're talking about individual situations here, but when we're combining it all together, what's the total cost to make it to this 75%?
Um, in aggregate for the employer?
Mm-hmm. And the increase from where it's.
From what was originally released is, uh, is just a little over $2 million. And there's a aggregate slide that's coming up here that'll, that'll illustrate that more clearly, but it's, uh, but it's a little over $2 million.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. I'm sorry. So everything in the black is what was, what, what the employees already have been given. And the blue, I'm a little bit confused as to what the employee would be asked to spend because of what is up here.
Yeah.
So I'm just asking, like, this is what we were asking that, what we're currently asking them to spend for 2025, 26. But if we spend the $2 million, it would take the employee contribution from what to what? Because I, this is confusing to me, this chart.
It would. I won't try to do that math in my head, but it'll take the 2025 contribution and, uh, oh, well, there, yeah, there it is. 5, 594.96 is 2025. The first row and column in the blue under the.
So, okay, so that's what we're asking them to spend or that's what they would be?
That's what they're currently paying per year in 2025. And that would, under this scenario, increase to 1,091.75.
Increase? You mean?
So the, the black represents the scenario that is being proposed, the alternative scenario that's being illustrated. 2025 is shown for reference. And then if you look at the increase column, the second column under the lighter blue shade, it increases by 496.79. So it's going from 594 to 1,091, and that increase represents a, a $496 increase.
Uh, okay, totally lost. Because I'm just asking, what are we asking the, uh, our employees and employee only? What would they be paying without our $2 million contribution? And then what would it change to is what I'm asking. This is ma- am I making sense?
No.
Because I'm just trying to figure out.
So under the originally proposed, yeah.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Because this is a lot of numbers and they're not making sense to me that, like, this is what the employee would be paying without our $2 million? With our $2 million, here's what they would be paying. That's all I want to know.
Yeah.
All right, so let me, I'm going to be a little, little lower level, I hope. So.
Thanks.
So with the proposed 2026 rates, we went back to the 2022.
Right.
So right now, the proposed rates for 1126 for an employee only would be $1,265.88.
Is that on this chart, 1,091?
It is. It's the first dark.
Okay, got it. Yes, thank you.
So that was what they paid in 2022.
Right.
And then we're going back to that rate is what the proposed is.
But with the $2 million, they'd go, it would go down to 594.96?
No, what, the 594.96 is, goes back to when we had all those huge rate reductions when we were able to infuse money and our trends were really low.
Okay.
So the $2 million would take us from the $1,265.88 to $1,091.75 for an employee only.
Thank you. That's the comparison I couldn't. Thanks, that's all I needed.
Thank you, thank you, Crystal. The next exhibit is, uh, the figures for the alternative scenario, the 75% scenario for the retirees. So you'll see there, the contribution relative to the 2025 contribution, uh, is in that first row in the, in the, uh, dark shaded green, the increase is $1,051 for the year. And when that's compared to, uh, the 2022 contribution, it is still about $270 lower. And so that was the target as well. So that's, that's the increment from the original proposal. Are there any tiers or any rate questions specific to the retirees? If not, I can move over to the second alternative, which is alternative, uh, at a 50% increase. So this would require, uh, a little bit, a little bit greater in- investment. The 75% scenario called for a little over $2 million. Uh, this one will be, um, a little over $4 million. And again, there's a chart that will summarize that coming up here shortly. All right, so looking at the same, uh, schools POS, employee-only row, the top row, uh, you can see the, that investment that I described there would require an increase from 2025 of $330 per year. And, uh, that increased investment would make it, uh, a little bit further lower than the 2022 rates by about $340. Any questions about the individual tiers for this scenario?
But, but actually, if we can, because we have probably 20 more slides to get through, if we could just try to hold as many questions as possible. Um, and I, I know there's a lot of details in here, but, um, I think we're almost to the end of the, the charts. And then is the school board questions on 21 that continue on, are those related to your presentation as well?
Uh, they are. And there are some utilization-based charts that we talked about, looking at the historical trends that follow those questions. So I'm happy to move ahead to those.
Yeah, I mean, if it's okay, I would like to, um, kind of get through the presentation part. That way everybody has an opportunity to chime in.
Absolutely.
If it's okay with everybody, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's the same scenario for the retirees there. Um, the, you, I think the concepts are, are, uh, have, have been discussed so that you can look at those, um, at your, at your leisure. So this, this is, uh, the chart that summarizes the aggregate financial impact. So we work to update the projections on an annual basis. The 2025 projection, the deeper we get into 2025, we will update that as data becomes available as to the plan's performance. So that's in the first column there. So the gross costs for the plan year, this is plan year is the same as the calendar year of 2025. Gross costs are projected to be 123.3 million. Employee contributions that we talked about, uh, sum to 9.4 million. For a net cost that has to be funded by Virginia Beach City Public Schools through either budgeted amounts or, um, accessing the health fund equals 113.9. The budgeted funding amount is 100.3. Uh, and that requires 13.6 million drawdown from the health fund surplus. So recall that that health fund surplus, in years where the funding rates exceeded the actual cost, that amount accumulated to the funding, to the health fund account. that amount accumulated to the funding, to the health fund account, that's what's being relied upon here. So that health fund balance, I skipped over that row intentionally. The balance as of May is nineteen point one million. Twenty twenty five is going to use up thirteen point six million of that. Some of that has already been booked as this year's worn on. So the drawdown remaining to year end is, is approximately eight million. So the estimate of the balance of the health fund is eleven point two million dollars at the end of twenty twenty five. And I'll stay in that column for just a minute. We may talk about the, the two months reserve in more detail. But that projected two months reserve, that is the recommended funding to have on hand that represents about two twelfths, two months of spend to cover the costs in a given plan year of claims expenses that have been incurred but not yet paid and billed to the city. So there is a lag in the time it takes from healthcare providers to record and send the bill to Centerra and for them to, to review it and, and pay it. So, so there's, in general, healthcare financing recommends keeping a reserve of that amount. So right there in twenty twenty five, you can see that the projected healthcare fund balance is, is not going to cover that amount, that desired amount. It doesn't have immediate repercussions, but it's a target goal to have that two twelfths of the gross cost funded, the two months of reserve. So if we move to the next column, the, the first column was the initially released employee contribution scenario. So you'll see that the, we're, we're moving into twenty twenty six, and that's about a ten percent increase projected in gross costs. So the total plan costs, adjusted for any changes in enrollment, is expected to increase from one twenty three point three to one thirty five point six. That's about ten percent. The employee contributions under this initially proposed scenario will contribute eighteen point four million. And that leaves a hundred and seventeen point two million to be funded by the City of Virginia Beach Public Schools, either through specific budgeting or reliance upon the healthcare fund. And so that, you'll see, so we talked about the healthcare fund balance being eleven point two million at the end of twenty five. So that's the starting point for twenty twenty six, eleven point two million. Under that scenario, this fund, the health fund impact is, is estimated to be eleven point four million. So it's a couple, couple hundred thousand dollars off it. But that was intentional when, when looking at the rate setting process. As Dr. Robertson said, the intention was to, to preserve, not go in the red. And in fact, that number cannot go negative. It has to be paid in some form or fashion. And so that was the scenario that was generated. So you'll see the projected health fund balance at the end of twenty twenty six is a negative point two million. Not, not perfectly zero, but, but essentially, the, the healthcare fund is, or the health fund is, 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 is gone. And so the tw, the two months targeted reserve is, is basically a hundred percent unfunded. And so that, all of that went into the rationale to arrive where, where the, the initial rates were set. So we talked about some alternative, if some additional funding is infused into the plan, we talked about the seventy five percent. So that's that next column over. And, you know, I'd mentioned it was a little bit over two million dollars in aggregate. You can see that by, if you go to the bottom, the projected health fund balance at year end, instead of being negative two, it grows to negative two point five. So that two point three million is not, the source of that funding is not reflected here. It's just shown as a negative number until there's a source, if, if, if and when there is a source of that funding identified. The fifty percent option that we talked about increases, again, an additional six point six million, or excuse me, four point three million from the originally released scenario. And that would result in a negative four point eight. Again, a number that cannot be negative if those costs materialize. And these are all projections, and we'll talk about some of the details and methodologies of how we arrive at these projections. But, but, but that's the result. Any questions about those aggregate figures?
Ms. Rogers, do you have any questions about the aggregate figures?
No, I mean, I, basically, we're in the red in our healthcare fund, no matter what. Even if we choose to not change anything, we're in the red. I, I think my question, more or less, and I don't think that, well, maybe you can answer it. Are we, do we have the most cost effective plan? Is this, do we have that? Like, is this the most cost effective plan that we can get at the moment?
So we haven't talked about changes in plan. And there's multiple dynamics that, that might influence the definition of the most cost effective. But a lot of it is plan design. And Linda talked about, the plans that you all offer are, are very rich, very competitive programs in the sense that when services are rendered, the patient pays for eleven percent of the cost of the care that they receive, and the plan pays for eighty nine percent.
Right. But she, we also talked about the high deductible. And I know that it was encouraged for employees to move to the high deductible plan. But when you are a single employee and your high deductible is two thousand dollars and you are, you know, not a high paid employee, that becomes an impossible situation where we then have our employees not going to the doctor. So then in the end of the day, we are encouraging our employees to stay away from the doctor until it's an emergency. And then we are actually increasing our claims. So I don't want to do that. I think that that's foolish. And so this is where I, I mean, I, I'm trying to figure it out. So like, that's what I'm asking. Is, do we have the most cost effective plans for our employees? Because right here, kind of, doesn't seem like we do. But I'm just asking.
So, so I'll touch on the, the funding element of it. So from a funding standpoint, self insured, while it requires sophisticated budgeting exercises like this and projection exercises, that is, in the long run, the cheapest funding. Because you're not paying the risk premium that's charged by the insurance, insurance carrier. So that saves somewhere, you know, five to, probably, probably five to eight percent over the long run. Now, you're at risk for fluctuations year to year. So from that standpoint, you're in the most cost effective funding.
Right, being self insured. But, but the plans that we're offering is that, like, sorry, and, and not to belabor.
So I, I think if we can try to continue to move forward and make sure that everybody on the board has the chance to come in. Is there any questions about this one? And then this will be our last, until the end of the presentation. And, and, you know, I just want to make sure everyone's included.
Yeah.
So this one, and I'm just going to isolate that as, as key, but if you can make that your last question for this to me.
Well, I, I think if I'm, if I may, I will move forward to some of the cost drivers and the trends to help you all understand. So when you think about what's happening in your plan, that's the overarching question is, what is happening to make our costs as high as they are? And we've got some slides in here, so if, if it's okay with you, I'll, I'll move forward past the, the questions. Okay, so I will talk a little bit about general market trend, and we'll get specifically into the drivers or the influencers of your plan. So the, the observation we talked about, increases for twenty twenty six for all employers are, are averaging in the, in the, you know, three to, three to five percent higher than what they have historically been. And the inflators that you see here on the left side, there's, there's unit cost challenges, contracting with providers for all payers, Centerra included, are, there's upward pressure on those unit costs. And, and a lot of that is post pandemic related shortages in clinicians. There's some consolidation going on. So there's a lot of dynamics there that are, that's making that harder. Higher demand and utilization of services and the prevalence of chronic conditions. We'll see that in your data a little bit, in particular, high cost claimants. The prescription drug trend, so RX is prescription drug trend, is driven by a lot of factors. Specialty drugs, high cost specialty drugs, GLP ones. These are extremely effective, life changing medications. They, they are wonderful sources for, for treating, for treating many, many conditions. But they come with a very high cost. And the demand for that, we've seen about a seventeen percent increase in your experience in specialty medications. And, and so when I say specialty medications, you know, I'll give you some examples. And a lot of these, you, you may well have heard on commercials. Humira, the average monthly cost, average per prescription cost of Humira is seven thousand dollars. Stelara is twenty six thousand dollars. Dupixent, four thousand dollars. Again, life changing medications, but they come with a, with a very, very high cost. So those are some of the sort of macro factors. There are a few deflators on the, on the right hand side there. The shift to, to lower cost settings, and in particular, virtual care. You all, your population does take advantage of virtual care, and that's a, that's a, that's a cost saving scenario, or, or setting, I should say. Availability of biosimilars is going to bring down the cost of some specialty medications. And then a couple specific to you all, you all have a very, very high generic dispensing rate, so that's helping you out. And you've got very, very solid rates of preventive care utilization. So that, that's a, that's a positive. All right, so this is just a high level summary of the health plan spend, and this is twenty twenty four spend. You'll see it was over a hundred and, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which was up about fourteen percent. And we've got some others, another exhibit that'll show historically. But one of the, I'll, I'll make one quick comment about one of the questions we, we skipped over in terms of the methodology for the projection. So what we do is, is actuarially sound approach to projecting forward. And it's based on the actual experience that is reported for your population. And what we do is we look at twenty four months. We put about two thirds weighting on the most recent twelve and about a third weighting on the prior twelve. And the hope is that that's going to pre, provide some smoothing over time. If there's one, one bad year or one really good year, there won't be an overreaction. And, and what we'll see in your trend is it's really been a multi year in the most recent years, really since twenty twenty two. So the timing is unfortunate because it coincided with the reduction in rates in twenty twenty three. I'll, I'll show you, share some more on high cost claimants here in just a minute, so I'll skip that bullet there. But the spend on a per member basis, so that's the purest understanding of the, of the cost change in a population is when you isolate it on a per member basis, increased about thirteen percent, which is about eleven percent above benchmark. The diagnostic categories in twenty twenty four that were driving this, you'll see there, cancer is number one, and that increased twelve percent. And that's a phenomenon too that is not unique to you all. It's, it's number one or two. Your top three are everybody's top three. Maybe the order fluctuates, but they are in everybody's top three. And so circulatory increase four percent, musculoskeletal eight percent in your, in your population. So those are the, those are the drivers. And I'll, I'll, I'll share with you what, the, the biggest indicator of the performance of the health plan from a budget standpoint is the presence of high cost claimants. And so we'll define that for purposes of this exhibit as individuals who have claims over one hundred thousand dollars. And so I, you know, I, I first want to, want to say, we talked about these life saving drugs. They're, they're, they're life changing and life saving medications. Individuals that have these high cost claims, you know, often these are not, not something that's preventable. They, they just happen. The actuarial tables tell us these high cost claimants are going to happen. We don't typically see the year to year increase in the, in the number of claimants that we've seen with, with you all. But this is not, this is not abnormal to have high cost claimants to this, to this degree. Just not every year. That's what's abnormal. And so there's a lot of detail in the chart there that shows you the history. And I'll steer you to the bar graph to the right, that is the number of claimants over one hundred thousand dollars. And that trend line has been going up very, very steadily with, you know, with, with one anomaly there in twenty twenty, which I think has had a compounding effect post pandemic where folks deferred care or didn't access care they might otherwise have gotten is, is in a lot of respects, coming back to, to impact claims in, in the more near term, twenty three and twenty four. So the prevalence of high cost claimants and the intensity, and by intensity, I mean the, the amount paid for high cost claimant, both of those are going up in the teens. Now, I will make one, one comment, the, we do have reinsurance in place, and that covers the cost. So the school, the schools pay for individual claimants in a given year, their claims up to six hundred thousand dollars. Beyond six hundred thousand dollars, there's a stop loss reinsurer to whom we pay a premium. And they absorb the risk of any and all claims above that, above that threshold. So that provides a, an important, an important layer of, layer of protection. And so when we look about, look at the history, the recent history from January twenty twenty two through May of twenty twenty five, we see that the, the trend is, it's a composite eight point five percent. And historically, it's been five to six, and it's been eight point five. So that's sustained delta between, you know, what, what you were seeing and, and what was used for, for predictions, you know, has, has, has caused the impact of the health fund. Now, I will say, the health fund has operated as, as it, as it was intended, which is to help subsidize in years where there is, you know, there's really high costs. So it has, it has served its purpose. Unfortunately, the, the three years in a row here of eight point five percent trend that's been above average have depleted that. And the fact that the contributions, the employee contributions were held flat and in fact decreased in twenty twenty three. So there was no additional money coming in from employees. Trend was going up eight point five, and then the budgeted amount was going up around three percent. That creates the impact to the health fund that's made the significant drawdown and get the balance where it is. So that's the end of, of my material. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to Linda.
Ms. Melnick?
It's really not a big deal, but just out of curiosity, the number five top diagnostic categories. Number five is injury slash poisoning. I just was curious what the poisoning, like, what's an example of poisoning since it's in the top five? Are you talking about children? Are you talking about?
Yeah, so, so that is an anomaly that that would make your top five. Because that means there was multiple scenarios of, of accidental injury or poisoning. But that, I don't, I don't recall the specifics of it. But it could be anything from a, a child getting into a, you know, a substance that was, that was toxic or, or, or even an adult for that matter.
Okay. But an anomaly nonetheless.
That's right.
I'm not sure if mine's a question for you or if it's a question for Ms. Mackens. But I think that the slide that we had where it shows the drawdown, and that is slide eighteen. I think this is really important, and I want to bring this up because it shows that our health fund balance is going to be in the negative regardless of the proposed increase this year, which concerns me a lot. And I don't know if you're going to cover the questions that the board members had asked in the slides, so you will. But I just wanted to draw extra attention to this slide because it's showing that we're going to be in the negative with that fund balance. And this isn't me really pointing any fingers, but at the time and when we decreased it and we had a healthy fund balance, I feel like the decision may have been a bit risky. I wasn't here on the board. But I, I don't think that the board actually made the decision. But I do think that, based on what we're looking at now in hindsight, the risk was great. And Ms. Melnick, are you still mine? Or, okay. All right, go ahead.
So we are gonna finish through the presentation with.
So we are going to finish through the presentation with school board questions. In response to a question raised by the school board for a timeline for planning and decision-making, this information, which is going to be displayed on two slides, so you can see it, provides a timeline of research, decision-making, and actions required for the health plan changes. This slide takes you from the planning stages through budget development. And this is a continuation of the timeline and takes you through the review of updated financial projections with first-quarter claims data, finalizing plan design and development of rates, communication for open enrollment, and ultimately to the plan effective date, which is in January each year. A question was raised by the school board to explain the process by which healthcare data and rate changes are shared with division leadership and staff. The schools have a joint benefits executive committee with the city comprised of executive leadership with monthly scheduled meetings. Updated financial projections are provided quarterly by our health and actuarial consultants at the benefits executive committee meetings and as requested if the committee asks Mercer for additional information. Committee members are expected to share information with senior leadership. Communications to staff with rate and plan changes has historically been provided in the September timeframe prior to open enrollment.
I think it's important also to note on that slide that superintendent is not on the benefits executive committee.
A question was raised by the school board to ask if COVID funds, ESAR, ARP, et cetera, were used directly or indirectly to offset the Health Fund balance. No pandemic funds were used to offset the Health Fund balance. All grant applications were developed following grant guidelines and were approved by the Virginia Department of Education. VBCPS has a strong system of internal controls in place to make sure grant money is only spent on approved and allowable expenses. VDOA also reviews every grant expense during the reimbursement process to confirm costs are allowable and included in the approved application. Questions were raised by the school board asking for the projected dollar amount of the stated premiums increase that would go into the Health Fund balance and ask for further clarification of the Health Fund being depleted by the end of 2026. The additional premiums will not increase the overall Health Fund balance and will instead be used to help keep weekly, to pay weekly claims, as David had explained. Even with this increase, the Health Fund is projected to have a $200,000 deficit by December 31, 2026. By June 30, 2026, the end of the fiscal year, the Fund is projected to have a $9.7 million surplus. However, best practice is to maintain two months of total healthcare costs in reserves, as David had mentioned. For fiscal year 2026, the projected amount that should be maintained in reserve is $21.5 million. I think I didn't go to the next slide. Oh, yeah, I did. Sorry about that. So for fiscal year 2026, the projected amount that should be maintained in reserves is $21.5 million. And for the full 2026 calendar year, the projected amount that should be maintained is $22.6 million. Restated, we should maintain $22.6 million in reserves for calendar year 2026 while our ongoing employer and employee premiums pay for normal expenses. Reserves should be reserved for larger-than-expected increases in claims and for large payments as needed for high-cost claimants. I think I went backwards a minute ago. Let's make sure we're on the right question. Sorry about that. The school board requested the current Health Fund balance and the projected two months' worth of claims. The Health Fund balance at the end of fiscal year on June 30, 2025, was $16,855,045. The projected cost of two months of healthcare costs for fiscal year 2026 is projected at $21.5 million, and for 2026 plan year, which is our calendar year, is projected at $22.6 million. And these figures are illustrated in the slides that follow. As mentioned on the previous slide, the Health Fund balance for the schools at the end of the fiscal year on June 30, 2025, was $16,855,045, shown at the bottom of the fiscal year 2025 column there on the left. This is a look at the fiscal year financial projections for the plan and is provided here to show that the amount of desired two-month reserves for the fiscal year is $21.5 million on the bottom right. This provides the calendar year fiscal year projections for the plan and is provided here to show that the amount of desired two-month reserves for the calendar year is $22.6 million. Questions were raised by the school board to determine what reports and data are currently accessible to the school board and recommendations on how reporting can be enhanced to ensure the board has timely, transparent, and actionable information. Reports are available upon request for Mercer's quarterly financial projections, Centerra's quarterly and annual review presentations, Centerra Quality Care Network's annual performance review. And just an explanation on that. The Centerra Quality Care Network, otherwise known as Sequin, is a clinically-integrated network of providers that utilize their data and evidence-based guidelines to drive quality, high-quality, cost-effective care decisions. Information can be shared with the school board more frequently with scheduling determined and aligned with updates from third-party consultants. A question was raised by the school board asking for an explanation of how healthcare costs are incorporated into the division's annual budget planning and forecasting. The Office of Budget Development imports position information for all full-time positions, including vacancies each November. This data includes prior year's enrollment benefit selections and does not reflect open enrollment changes that begin January 1. Mercer shares updated trend information during their quarterly presentations. And based upon their findings, we may request additional modeling or scenarios to better understand the overall fiscal impact. The budget is then adjusted as needed based on available funding and other identified priorities before the annual operating budget is formally adopted. A school board question asked about the impact of healthcare expenditures on staffing decisions, employee benefits, and overall financial sustainability. Employee benefits are the division's second-largest expense after salaries and wages. As benefit costs rise, they impact the ability to develop a compensation package that includes larger pay increases. Increasing healthcare costs can make it more difficult to offer competitive benefits, making it more challenging to attract and retain top talent. Greater costs may be passed on to the employee through increased premiums and deductibles that can lead to dissatisfaction and higher turnover. It is difficult to measure the direct impact of healthcare costs on overall financial stability. With greater than 85% of our operating budget in the area of personnel cost, any increase to healthcare premiums will have an impact. A question was raised by the school board asking for potential strategies to mitigate cost growth while maintaining competitive benefits for employees. The School Division has embraced best practices for healthcare cost containment strategies that include multiple plan options within and out-of-network and out-of-area coverage, HSA-eligible, high-deductible health plan, employer contributions towards a health savings account, value-based benefit arrangement with providers engaged in quality care services through a clinically-integrated network, lower copays and co-insurance for services at providers participating in the value-based care, lower pharmacy copays and co-insurance for prescriptions filled at preferred pharmacies, lower-cost telemedicine options for acute care and behavioral health services, price transparency tools for medical services and pharmacy, pharmacy benefit formulary with pre-authorizations, step therapy, and closed formulary for high-cost medications with lower-cost alternative drugs with the same efficacy, an annual claims audit, and a comprehensive wellness program. Additional cost containment strategies that the School Division could further develop include greater education of the value of the consumer-driven health plan and health savings account. The CDHP plan encourages greater accountability when obtaining services and provides a tax-free HSA. So the CDHP plan encourages greater accountability when obtaining services and provides a tax-free HSA financial account that never forfeits and remains with the employee post-employment. Could also consider changing our telehealth coverage to allow services to be paid by the plan before having to meet the deductible for the CDHP plan, which is newly released legislation. Can engage in greater healthcare data analytics to understand cost drivers and develop targeted communications for greater awareness and resources for members, and explore additional options with third-party administrator or wellness vendor and other contracted providers. We're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Callen?
This is a question I have for David. David, if I was following you correctly, and that's a huge if, but if I was, on Slides 16 and I believe 14, yes. There's an indication on 14 that these would be the rates if there was a 75% increase in the employee's premium. And on 16, it's a 50% increase. I believe you made reference to the dollar result from those increases. And if I took notes correctly, the 75% increase is representative of approximately a $4 million requirement in order to satisfy, and the 50% was at $2 million. But that's a huge if. So I'm already getting the nod from my coach here that I've got them backwards.
You were very close, so you had them reversed. So the 75% increase asks employees to pay more. So that means the investment required by you all is a little bit lower, and that's the one that's $2.3 million. And the 50% contribution is a lower contribution, so you all invest more, and that was the $4.3 million.
Okay, so those are the numbers, $2.3 and $4.3.
That's right.
That's what we could expect if we were to embrace those.
That's right.
Second question has to do with the information found on the slides that Linda was just going through. And that is on Slide 38. And I'm trying to follow the bouncing ball. And on Page 38, there is a spreadsheet fiscal year 2025 projected and 2026 projected with categories down the left-hand side with references that it is as a result of following different categories. For example, the projected Health Fund balance at year-end shows for fiscal year 2025 a projection of $18.1 million. But I'm arriving at that number, according to the guide, by adding Column E and Column H. And if I'm following that correctly, Column E says $95.5 million, and H is a negative $1 million. And my simple math says, take a million away from $95.5 million, and you should have $94.5 million. But I get to $18.1 million, and my brain explodes, and so I don't have an answer. I'm hoping you do.
It would help, Regina, if you could pull that slide up, 38.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so are we able to get that slide up there? Yes. So for 2025 projected, recall that we will initially undertake that activity in 2024 to project for 2025. Now that we are further along in 2025, we will update the projection, and we will have already taken what was needed year-to-date from the Health Fund balance. And so that $1 million is the drawdown remaining to the year-end. And so for the rest of the year, the Health Fund, the incremental drawdown from the Health Fund is $1 million. So when we take, and we, so we've updated the Health Fund balance as of May at $19.1. The figure, the $12.1, is what we expected to have been drawn down for the entirety of 2025, $1 million of which is left to be drawn down. So the $19.1 is where we are. That's reflective of the fact that we have already drawn that fund down by some amount. There's $1 million left to be drawn down based on the projection, and that leaves it with $18.1 million estimated at the end of 2025 fiscal year.
But I'm seeing that the projected Health Fund balance at year-end is arrived at the addition of E and H. At least, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Yeah, and, yeah, I apologize. That should be F. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, yeah, I apologize. That's a typo on that methodology. I apologize for the.
That makes sense.
Yes, 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 thank you. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Williams, then Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. I just want to kind of piggyback on something that Ms. Melnick had said a while back on Slide 9, the historical employee rates. So in 2018, our employees had a certain rate, and then the next year, those rates were raised by $3 or $4. And then in 2019, 2020, 2021, and 2022, the rates stayed the same, zero increases. Okay, so that's basically five years. And then we use the balance of the Health Fund, which in a very appropriate way, to give relief for '23, '24, and '25. And in some cases, it was extremely, a lot of relief there. So now our '26 rates are actually, I think Ms. Melnick said going back to the '22 rate, but they're actually going back all the way back to basically the 2018, 2019 rate. Okay, okay, 19, okay, thank you. So I just think that's very important to look at. With our city folks, because I think a couple of my colleagues were on the board when we decided to give this to our employees from the Health Fund. And I know that we kind of got some indication that the city may not have been completely thrilled with that because the city employees, to my recollection, they did not enjoy such a decrease. Is that a correct statement, do you know?
That is correct. They have not raised rates since 2019, and their '26 rates will be the same, and we will be back to the same level on an annual basis as the city.
Okay, so the firefighters and the policemen, the city employees paid the same thing. They didn't experience the three years of yellow.
Correct.
And then now we're all kind of equal paying the same thing.
Yes, and just for clarification, when people look at the rates, the city currently has 26 pay, and the schools have 20. So if they're just looking at the premiums, they may think they're different, but the annual cost is the same.
Because of the, yeah, pay. Okay, okay, I just wanted to kind of clarify that because I think that's important information for us to remember. Thank you so much.
Ms. Rogers, then Ms. Melnick?
Okay, first, I just wanted to make a quick statement on Slide 34. This question was asked because I know that it has been put out into the public that the school board used some sort of grant funding to pay down these premiums. And I just want to reiterate that that is not the case, that these funds were taken from our Health Fund balance. And so that was allowable, and that we were, that was a choice. Obviously, I wasn't on the board when the choice was made, but that this was not a one-time grant-use funding.
That is correct.
Deal, so I just want to reiterate that because I have even read that on social media, and it's just not the case. I think my next two questions, I'm not exactly sure if they're going to be for you or for Dr. Robertson. So on Slide 40, we discussed the possibility of how we can get reporting. Are we going to be possibly having maybe bi-yearly or even quarterly information because it's given to y'all quarterly? Or is that, has that always been done, like?
It's going to happen now.
Okay. Thanks for that. And then the other question I have, and I don't know who can answer this, but it's my understanding from our discussion on Slide 41 that we, okay, so we have positions that would be fully burdened. So we have a reading instructor, and we have set aside their salary and their fully burdened healthcare, and then if that position is not. And then if that position is not filled, then all of that goes to reversion. But I guess my question is, is that why would the healthcare portion not go back to the healthcare? Am I making sense?
So if, if an employee has not been hired, then we don't account for their health insurance. We have roughly seventy-five percent of our employees choose our healthcare options, twenty-five percent of our employees do not. So you don't count into the healthcare calculation unless you, during open enrollment, declare you're picking one of our plans.
Okay, got it. So then, so when we do reversion, it does not include healthcare costs. It just includes salary costs, right?
Well, and let me explain what happens, kind of. So
Yes.
when we have, when that employer contribution, which actually would go into the health fund balance, when we do the budget and balance it, that's our operating budget. So I'm budgeting the employer contribution for positions that we bring in to start with the budget, based on what positions we're going to fund, our staffing standards, all of that. If we don't hire that position, then yes, that's part of our employer contribution that does not go into the health fund, because there's no employee to, no employee for us to make an employer contribution on. And so that money does fall out into reversion.
No, I, I understand. I just, I guess. I, I, I don't understand, like, why? Like, I mean, I do. Like, I hear what you're saying. I, I would like to not have to put so much in reversion, is what I'm getting at.
But I, I think that's a balance, and I understand your, your point. And, and again, when we bring positions in, it's to do the budget, the timing, we have to bring them in in November. That'll change the day after we, and I'm being a little bit, but, I mean, it can change the next day.
Right.
And so we have to start with a baseline, and I have to prepare for those positions to be hired, because we've agreed, as we've approved the budget, that those are the positions, if we, in a perfect world, we needed those staff.
And I'm totally fine with that. I'm just saying, that money that we're budgeting is for our healthcare. And so I'm like, so why are we having to put it in reversion? Why can't we put it towards healthcare? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do. And so I will say this, so when we budget, sometimes in the budget system, if we, we are working really diligently to make sure that it is in the health fund account. In health fund account, I mean, like a general ledger account in the accounting system. So what happens where maybe before it was chunked. And so historically, and I mean way back in the day, when we had extra money remaining, we did what was called a sweep, and some people may remember that from many years ago.
I'm looking at y'all.
So city can, and so then they changed that, so we couldn't sweep from the bottom line. So that stopped, and this has been ten years ago.
Okay.
So now, we've worked really diligently this year, depending on what happens, that those health general ledger accounts for our employer contribution, based on those positions, have those funds in there. If those positions don't get filled and that money remains in there, we should be able to sweep what's remaining in those health accounts for the employer contribution into the health fund.
That's, that's, that's what I was getting at. So we can do that?
We can, if the money's remaining. So at the end of twenty-five, that was not the case. And so we worked really hard with Mercer, with Linda, with our budget system vendor, to make sure that those employer contribution rates are where they need to be in that budget system. So at the end of the fiscal year, when we look at those, those specific accounts, we can say, look, there's money left in there. It wasn't used to do an employer contribution for these vacancies. We'll sweep back into the health fund.
So it won't be lost to reversion?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, that was my question. Sorry, it took a minute.
Ms. Melnick?
No, and that's okay. And the piece that other people may not have caught was when the CFO said we may be able to, I saw your finger crossed there, and so that was, that was an important nuance in your statement, so, I mean, some, you know.
And I say that because the methodology is there, but again, a lot depends on, I mean, we, you know, thanks, thanks to HR and the wonderful team that Dr. Trotman has, you know, they've been able to fund vacancies pretty well for us. And so we're, back in the day, we had a lot more. We probably don't see that like we used to. So it's a balance.
It is a balance. So my question, not to belabor slide nine, but can we just go back there one more time? Because what I wanted to talk about, because you mentioned this separately, that the city did not enjoy what we were able to do. They didn't have the same benefit, right? So do you know how much that increase would have been? Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So we, we were able to put money in, right? So the difference, so like the difference between a family plan in 2022 and 2026, like we put in for each year for someone on a family plan, a total of six-hundred-thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents.
So you're trying to, if, if the rates had remained flat with all of the additional funding that was provided, you're wondering where our health fund balance would be today? Is that the question?
No, let's just forget all that. I'll ask you that one offline. But I, is anybody else in the queue? I just, I just want to thank you for the, for the depth of this conversation, because this is truly rocket science. I think it's easier to put humans in space than it is to really muddle through this process and this, and we do talk about this a lot. But it is very difficult to understand this. So I, I do appreciate the time you've spent. And I guess, I guess I can just leave it there, but, but thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask a few questions, and then Ms. Rogers. So, and maybe a couple of comments. When I look at it, and I'm going back to slide eighteen, and the reason I'm going back to slide eighteen is because of something you said during our last school board meeting, where you said that the fund balance is going to deplete by the end of 2026, even with the increase. And so I worry, I worry about next year also. I also, and I, I recognize we project the best that we can with the information that is available to us. But I am very concerned about the future and what it holds for our health insurance and our health insurance premiums. If the projections are, I, I don't know that I want to say off, but if it ends up costing more and then projected, how that impacts this bigger picture here? Is that something maybe you can speak to?
I think that's more of a budget question.
Okay.
That is something that's of great concern as well. If, well, we can probably see, absorb a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. If it continues, we will have to, as an employer, put additional funding into that health fund. We have to pay those claims. We will have, we have, I mean, the employee rates will be set, and that will be our only option. And we would have to look and see where we are with trend and utilization and all of the things that, that David spoke about, to figure out what next steps would be. But that would truly be a step that we would have to, to, to rattle with.
Okay. And so for my comments, actually, let me ask one more question. Why do we do twenty pay periods instead of twenty-six? Wouldn't it be more consistent for our employees to do it across?
We have employees, ten-month employees that don't get paychecks in July and August.
I see. Okay, thank you. All right. Are we on twenty-four otherwise? Twenty-four pay periods?
Yes, pay periods are twenty-four.
Okay.
Twenty or twenty-four, depending on their pay options.
Great, thank you.
And their contract types. Right, so employees, even if they're a ten-month, they can choose to have a twenty-four pay option if they want to, and then the deductions would be in the summer, I mean, the, their pay would be in the summer. But because the system wouldn't be able to handle, you know, is yours going to be twenty, or is yours going to be twenty-two, based upon your pay option? It's something that we've talked about, and perhaps when we look to the future of a new human capital management system, if it's something to explore, but I don't know, I would have to leave that to the others on how, if that's even an option, where employees would be paid over twenty-four pay.
Okay. All right, so I, I think it's, it's evident that the costs of health insurance premiums are rising, and I don't know that there's anything that the school board can do to stop those costs from rising. We just have to, unfortunately, grapple with that. I also understand, though, and I, I think there's a community perception that is a very real feeling, which is school division has a one-point-one-billion-dollar budget. I know that we've made many, many cuts to that budget. We've cut a lot of positions, four-and-a-half million dollars this year. But, you know, the question is, and I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Robertson or Ms. Pate, is there anything that we can reallocate, and would that be something that can be done to ease and relieve the burden that our staff is currently experiencing?
Yes, so Chair Brown, I appreciate you acknowledging that over the past two years, we've reduced central office funding by eleven million dollars. Some of that's through positions, some of that's through programs. And we've done that for the sole purpose to help the board meet their priority of compensation. So really, that eleven million dollars in reductions has gone fully into compensation. As we continue to look at our efficiencies and goal five of our compass of 2030, advancing organizational efficiencies and excellence, we continue to look at where are there opportunities for us to leverage new technologies, leverage new processes, leverage new systems to be more efficient. The challenge is, you can cut programs to save money, or you can cut people to save money. And neither option is a good option. In Virginia Beach City Public Schools, we provide a private school education and a public school setting with the number of academy programs we have, the number of specialty programs we have, the number of athletic programs we have, all the way down to middle school. And I don't think the community would tolerate reductions in academies. I don't think the community's going to tolerate a reduction in athletic services. We had a long discussion last year about athletic ticket prices. So then it becomes, okay, maybe you have too, too many people. One of the hallmarks of Virginia Beach City Public Schools is the support that we can provide teachers in, in a timely manner. The state of Virginia released today the SOL results from the spring. And once again, Virginia Beach City Public Schools is the second highest performing school division in Commonwealth of Virginia for students more than twenty thousand. We exceeded the state on a number of things, and that's because we have a phenomenal staff. But that staff knows, when they need something, we are here to deliver. So again, there's two ways to save money. You cut programs or you cut people. Neither, neither option is palatable. But we will do what is necessary based upon the wisdom of the board.
Okay. So I think for me, it's very difficult to look at the situation without knowing exactly what the fiscal impact of that is. And, you know, there's been some suggestions that we would not have reversion at the end of the year. And I, I understand why that would be a suggestion. However, I think that not preparing for the unexpected would be a failure to exercise our fiscal oversight. And so we have to prepare for the unexpected. We have to be prepared for an emergency, including the emergency of if these claims come in higher than projected, and that would, that would be one of those types of emergencies that we would be faced with. But I would just be interested to hear from my colleagues at this time if there's any interest in evaluating any of these seventy-five percent or fifty. Ms. Rogers?
Okay. I, I did want to just ask Crystal really quick, because I was, when I was talking about version funds, I was just specifically talking about putting the positions. And you were talking about the sweeps, and you're saying that we're doing that, and we weren't doing that previously. Is that going to then impact our numbers? If we were not specifically allocating them before, and now we are, and we're sweeping, it won't?
No, well, we, fiscal year 2025 is done, so reversion is, is
That's already gone.
Well, it's not gone, but we'll come, be coming back to you all. It takes us a while to get, the books are closed as of the third week, and so they've reconciled with the city, and then we'll do what's called the revenue sharing formula. It'll be an actual over-budget. And that will couple with the reversion, and we'll bring it back to the board and then to city council for approval of what we want to do with those funds. So in twenty-six, as we built the budget for this fiscal year, it is, and it is the methodology I explained earlier, where it's where it needs to be so that we can sweep.
So will that, though, impact in a positive way now that we're going to be sweeping?
We hope that it does. I mean, again, a lot, there's other factors, like, there's other factors, but there should be, there should be where we don't have a hundred percent in every single cost center of every single employer contribution health account that we're actually going to spend to zero.
Okay, so that means that that could impact in a positive way what's in our healthcare.
It could, and I can't, I can't say what that looks like.
No, and I'm not asking for a projection. I'm just asking if the change is going to
Yes.
help us. Thank you. That was the one question. As far as your question, I don't know that I can answer. I, I would like to have more than those two options. Does that make sense? That maybe we can, maybe do something different if the, if the fifty, seventy-five percent. I mean, I don't think this needs to just be one conversation. And, and if the fifty doesn't look like we can do, and seventy-five, that we explore other avenues.
So Linda, we have open enrollment starts September twenty-ninth. What's our, what's our real timeline before we would have to make significant adjustments to open enrollment, which would then impact, can you walk us through that timeline? Because I think to Ms. Rogers' question, the work that is required to turn other scenarios around is not something that occurs in a day, so.
Yes, so our original deadline to Benefit Focus was July thirty-first, to provide them with all of our plan design changes and rates. Because what that takes is they have to configure their system, and then we test the data, and then it's, you know, finalized before it's released. We have had conversations with them to basically say, we're, you know, if, if we can get it, you know, you would change a week before, or two weeks before, we're running out of that time, I guess, before open enrollment, like, we need you to make it happen. But there will come a time when we, and I don't, I guess, have that actual deadline.
Yes, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to give you the answer. So Ms. Mackens is not trying, the reality is, by September tenth, we have to be able to say what we're going to do, because the longer we wait, we cannot send stuff out and have it wrong.
Right, and, and I'm not, I think what I'm kind of trying to understand is what the choices we've been given is a long-term supplement, where maybe if we can't afford that, we do a one-time, but I don't know what that would look like and how much. Does that make sense? Where, and, and even if we can afford it, but I'm saying if we can't do a monthly, we'll give you a, like, fifty percent. So if that's not feasible, is there something we can do, like just a one-time thing, to try and help? I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
So, yeah, I would say that if the board decided that So, yeah, I would say that if the board decided that, let's just say in December, they wanted to provide a stipend amount to, to staff who chose our health insurance plan. I will just share with you, 75% of our staff chose the health plan. 25% of the staff did not choose the health plan. You would really need to give 100% of the staff the same stipend. Where you're gonna have 25% of the staff, which is well over 3,000 employees, who are gonna be furious that they didn't get $500. When you look at the total amount you might be able to provide, you're probably talking about $500. So, i- is it something the board could ask us to take a look at? Absolutely. We'd have plenty of time to take a look at that.
That just is another option. Again, I, I, if we can't afford the other two, if it's really not soluble, I, I, I think doing nothing is not an option. So, I'm just trying to do something.
Ms. Melnick?
So, I like that option much better, Dr. Robertson, because the thought of negative numbers being thrown at me and having to make a decision by September 10th to tweak this is very scary to me. So, we recently had a million-dollar bill to the VEC that we were not expecting. We, oh, what else? I was gonna say something else that is significant with, darn it. I got off track. I'm just very concerned, even the health plan itself and the, and that balance. And then the potential for a negative number there, that's very scary. We, I, I call myself classically trained over the last 11 years by people who have been doing this job for a very long time. Farrell Hansicker, you, you were under Farrell. And, and the work that you do, the work that HR does, the work that we do as a group to budget, we've already planned our budget. And so, right now, it, it's very, very tricky. Oh, this is what I was gonna say. It's really what's coming from the federal government also. So, we had a cut. So, as you all know, we had an executive order that, that slashed money from school divisions across the nation. And we have to be prepared. We have to be smart with our money. And we have to keep a percentage in, in the bank technically, right, to offset any of these federal cuts that might happen on a whim. And, and that's very scary. And I think we worked very hard this year together. I think we walked away from budget together, and all of us agreed that was tough, but look what we did. And we planned appropriately. And none of us could have predicted. I mean, we knew it was there technically, but not to this level. And I'm sorry for this. But I am very interested, and once we get over this hump, and we get in, and we see what we have left, giving, investigating, giving our teachers a stipend, and that's where I stand on that. But today, in getting it done by September 10th, I just can't.
Yes, Dr. Green?
Thank you. I also concur with not rushing as well. And then a question I have, Ms. Mackinson and, and Ms. Pate. We, we have a robust benefits package. And, and I think I would be remiss if we did not also reference that other benefits that we pay for employees is a portion of their VRS for the Virginia Retirement System. So, my question, and I know you may not have an answer, and this is another reason why I would, I lean toward postpone. Do we know whether or not we're, given the economy, are we gonna have an increase to the employer's contribution for the, I know you may not know that right now for the VRS anytime soon?
We do not. I mean, I think we just received some actuarial reports from the state, and we can look and see. But usually, we kind of get that information right when we're doing the beginning of the budget. So, it's not an increase for this year, for '27. I know the city's projecting that, but theirs is different than ours. And so, we can check into that and see those reports, the timing of those comes as we're trying to do our, our financial reporting, and we do a bunch of notes in our APFOR and all that kind of stuff. So, we'll see if we can get that sooner rather than later.
All right. Thank you.
And, and just to add to that, the voluntary contribution of employee, of hybrid employees will directly impact an employer match, and that's unpredictable. But, so it, you know, there's attempt to, to budget that. But to your point, that's a factor as well.
Right. And that's why I, I wanted to make sure, and especially for our view in public, that they understand, even though we're having a very good conversation about health benefits, you know, the VRS, the Virginia Retirement System contributions as well are as equally and could be significant for employees as well, if there were an increase.
Mr. Callen?
Madam Chair, I don't know if you're taking a head count on people's perspectives, but I'd like to second Mrs. Melnick's commentary. Not only her caution as far as the speed at which we're moving, but also the heart that accompanies the desire to try to do something to address the issue that exists. So, I'd like to just go on record in support of her rationale and reasoning.
Vice Chair Williams?
I agree with that also. I think that we need to be very cautious, and we do not, we cannot have a negative balance, and we do not need to get close to a negative balance because of unintended costs that are definitely going to come in one way or another. So, I agree with my colleagues on that as well.
Mr. Brownsteal?
Yes, I just want to say that I agree, you know, on where we're looking at going. And I want to say thanks to Ms. Melnick and Ms. Rogers for kind of bringing up the discussion on ways that we could save some money and make it, you know, more affordable for the teachers. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Ms. Fountain?
Thank you, Chair Brown. And I'd just like to say to all of you presented today, thank you for your hard work and giving us a detailed discussion on all that we've heard today. I, I would go in deep, but I was talking with the state delegate, talked with a couple of them this week. And they informed me that everything is gonna be tight. They're working tightly too in Richmond because of all the things that has come down from these, from Washington, from the federal government, Medicaid, Medicare, all those cutbacks. And they're gonna have to try to find monies to figure what to do, to figure out. So, that, they were sending me, and it's a blim of a message, education probably won't get anything at all. Or if you get anything, be very slim. You know, I'm, I'm very passionate about public education. I guess a lot of you know that, and most of my board members up here are as well. But public education has never been fully funded. We've had to do things with mandates, with unfunded mandates, or a mandate was not fully funded. And I could go off and name a couple of them that we had to do. ADI was one of them as well. And a lot of things that came down. But this division found a way to do what we had to do. And but no one, people see it going, people see it happening, but no one asks, how are you doing this? What did you have to move or move around? And, and Dr. Roberts spoke, spoke to it really well. When you move one thing to address another, it's like a domino effect. When you move a staff, what happened to their position? What happened to our teachers that have to take, take on more? Because you moved three teachers out of that, that school, or you moved a part of the transportation. So, we have to be very cautious on how we move with this and how we move out. There are consequences of moving too fast, and there are consequences of moving too slow. So, I'm looking at all that we are having to do. And it's a crunch time. Nobody's letting, when they said, when they talked about dismantling public education, you know, parents are totally losing it. What are you, what are you all going to do, school? Well, how are you all gonna address this? And it became a burden on our shoulders as well. I like what my colleagues have said, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Rogers, and Dr. Green, not rushing into anything and, and reviewing options of what we can do in moving forward and not going into a negative. I totally agree with them, what they're saying. And I hope that we can come back with some resolve on making sure that these things happen. But when you're having your support team, the, the, well, or people that you get your money from, the, the state delegates in your city, talking things that doesn't sound too good, then you go back and tell them the crunch, it is fearful. I don't want to be in a negative as well. I want to make sure that we do fiduciary responsibility well. Because when it falls down the crack, it'll look like, you know, you did not do your job. So, I'm all for what my colleagues, Ms. Melnick, Rogers, and Dr. Green are seeing. And let's try to have some options to make this happen. Thank you.
Ms. Dwyer?
So, I guess I have to speak too. Everybody else did. But I just want to say thank you to both of you and Crystal. This wasn't easy, and you guys were concise. You brought a lot of clarity, and you enlightened us to a tough topic. And I think all of us benefited from the information that came forth tonight. And I just want to say thanks.
Okay. So, thank you very much for your presentation and all the information. I want to thank the teachers that have tuned in, the custodians, the bus drivers, nurses, really, all of our staff. Every single person that works in this division is very important in making sure that our division does really great things for our students. I personally, as much as I would love to, you know, have evaluated some of this, there, there just isn't enough support at this time. And I, I think the reality is, that I'm hearing from the board, is that all of us would love to find a way to do this and find a way to reduce it and find a way to get it to what the cost was last year. But the reality that we're faced with is that we can't actually do that without being extremely risky. I like the concept of seeing if there's a stipend, although I am a little bummed that it would be post-tax versus pre-tax. But we're gonna work with what we, what we have, and we will all work together on that. It doesn't sound to me, from the comments on the board, that we're gonna want any allocation recommendations at this time at our next school board meeting, although I do believe we still have some presentations related to healthcare perhaps on our agenda. And we are going to be discussing healthcare very robustly on this school board because of all the information that you've seen here tonight. So, I imagine we, we may be doing quarterly, Dr. Robertson?
It'll be built into the budget calendar, which Ms. Pate will share with you on September 9th.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rogers?
I just wanted to add that I completely acknowledge that it is our staff that keeps our schools running. Our SOL scores are what they are because of our staff. And that I completely understand that we can't do this without you. And so, we will work to try and remedy this as best as we can. While we can't control our healthcare costs on our own, if I could, I would. We're gonna work towards solutions in other ways to make this more affordable. And that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay. Thank you. It is 8:53 PM, and we are now adjourned.